Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 139. Resolution Amending Resolution 510 of 2019 entitled, "A Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements, Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, and Emergencies with the Production of the Oakland Transportation Study and Associated Projects, To Provide for a Specific Payee and Authorize Entering into a Contract for the Oakland Transportation Study." Bill Number 140. Resolution Amending Resolution 336 of 2019 entitled, "A Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements, Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, Maintenance, and Improvements and Supplies in Connection with the Production of the Hill District Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan, To Provide for a Specific Payee and Authorize Entering into a Contract for the Hill District Transportation Study." Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 141. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project, Located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill Number 145. Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 36 of 2019, Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, By repealing Chapter 639, Crocodilians and Venomous Snakes in its entirety, And Adding a New Chapter 639, Crocodileian Species and Red-Eared Sliders, Prohibiting the Keeping, Sell, Exchange, Adoption, Exchange, or Transfer of Such Animals in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 146. Ordinance Supplementing Ordinance Number 36 of 2015, Relative to the Pittsburgh City Code at Title VI Conduct Article III, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Chapter 636, Wild Animals, Section 636.06, Prohibiting the Capture and Harm of Any Wild Birds, To Prohibit the Sale of Native or Indigenous Birds, To Eliminate Any Permit or License, Allowing Individuals to Trap Wild Birds, And to Completely Prohibit Trapping Wild Birds Other Than by a Properly Qualified and Trained Employee of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Animal Care and Control When the Wild Bird is Injured, Resides Within a Building, Or Poses an Imminent Risk of Property Damage or Physical Harm." These two bills are sponsored by Councilman Bruce Kraus. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 142. Resolution Providing for Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Compass Natural Gas Partners, LP, For the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System, And Provision of Fuel for the Payment Cost Not to Exceed $378,000. Bill Number 143. Resolution Amending Resolution 837 of 2017 entitled, Authorizing and Directing the City Controller To Create a Special Trust Fund To Be Designated as the Shinley Park Rink Trust Fund, For the Purpose of Depositing Funds and Expenditure of Funds For Any and All Related Expenses, Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to Utilize the Trust Fund. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 144. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety To Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh Into an Agreement with Bucks County Community College For Hazardous Materials, Safety Officer Training, And Certification Services Cost Not to Exceed $9,000. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 147. Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh To Enter into a Preservation Agreement with the New Haslet Theater. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Bobby Wilson. And Council President Theresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 148. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval On Behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure For Katie Sawyer And on Behalf of the Department of Public Works For Donald Mudrick Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Regular Meeting, February 25th, Tuesday, February 25th. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Drossberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Seven Members Present.
Thank you. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the students from Pittsburgh's Langley K-8 School In my district and District 2 in the Sheridan section of the City of Pittsburgh. And we have some amazing students who will also do a performance after. And then we'll have a moment of silence after the pledge. Do you want to start?
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, One nation under God, Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And now, we're going to have the students do a performance. And can we also say that we're joined by our School Board Director for that area? And, oh, I didn't see you, Dr. Hamlet. Hello. Dr. Hamlet, the Superintendent of Pittsburgh Public Schools, And our School Board Member Veronica Edwards for that section. And she can introduce the other people with her. I know Mike Nichols brings the kids here every year, so I want to thank him for that. But if you want to do your performance first, and then we'll do the speaking after. The performance is first, and then we'll do speaking after, okay? Because I'm going to give Dr. Hamlet a chance to say a few words, too.
Next, we'll go sing for you and play for you, "I Have a Dream." I will allow you a moment.
I got a dream that one day I'm gonna love even so I myself.
My dream is to be free. My dream is to be free. My dream is, my dream is to be free. My dream is to be free. My dream is, my dream is to be free. My dream is to be free. My dream is...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to say, introduce all the kids that you have with you, and say your name as well? You can pass it around. Let me see if you see it.
My name is Ms. Bushiger. I'm the instrumental music teacher at Pittsburgh Langley. And I'm going to pass the mic around. Each student is going to introduce themselves to you.
I'm Michael Kennedy, 8th grade.
Jasmine Amari, 7th grade.
I'm Ms. Greer. I teach 6-8 autistic support.
Sarah Redwood, 6th grade.
Alexis, 8th grade.
She's my gummy, baby! 7th grade!
I'm Aggie Miller, 6th grade.
Karma Schaefer, 6th grade.
Pookie, 7th grade.
Raffael Diaz, 8th grade.
JV Margueta, 6th grade.
Carlos Lawrevera, 7th grade.
Isaiah Wafte, 6th grade.
Mr. Chapman, 6th to 8th grade autistic support.
Mr. Moody, 6 to 8 para.
Lee McDonald, Lee Ricardo McDonald Jr., 8th grade.
Jalen Freeman, 5th grade.
Precious Jules, 5th grade.
Carmelo Fien, 5th grade.
Can I just say real quick, we're going to hear from our School Board Member Veronica Edwards, And then the Superintendent, if you'd like to come forward and say a few words. And then Mike Nichols. We actually have a Pittsburgh Public School Day here in the chamber, so there's more people here for this.
Good morning. The motto of the school district is "Expect Great Things." Can you help me say that, "Expect Great Things"? Say it again, "Expect Great Things." Expect Great Things. Because that's what we expect of our students. But we don't do it alone. Our teachers, our superintendent, My fellow board members. Ms. Falls is here. Also, for all of our staff. Mr. Nichols, who helps us and read to our children and bring them to City Council. We are very glad to be here today. And for myself, a shout out for Langley. Theresa Kell Smith, President. We are now installing a safety zone around the school. And included in that safety zone was Mrs. Kell Smith, Myself, the Principal of Langley, And the Infrastructure Department of the City of Pittsburgh. Get 'em a hand, y'all. Thank you. We are looking good. So that safety zone was installed to keep our children safe. And we did it as a team. It still takes teamwork to make the dream work. Thank you.
And I have to come behind Ms. Edwards and say this, right? So, thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting our students. But I also want to make sure that we thank Ms. Edwards, Theresa Kell Smith, also for their support of the school as well. And I also want to acknowledge another one of our board members that are in here today. Ms. Cindy Falls is in the back with our CTE group as well. But more importantly, thank you to Principal Psychon, The teachers, the support, but also students. Continue to do your best. You're awesome, amazing talent. Thank you, guys.
Can we get a photo with everyone? Mike Nichols, did you want to say something? And then we're going to do the CTE proclamation. If the Superintendent and School Board Members would stay for that. I went to school with Mike Nichols.
Yeah, we're childhood friends.
Grade school.
Childhood friends. And I'm just glad to be here today, so, you know, this is nothing new. I'm happy to bring the kids down. I'm happy to support that, of the Superintendent and the School Board That make this happen. You know, I couldn't do it alone, so I'm just happy to be here. And also, I'm cancer-free, seven years. That's right. So I urge everybody, get your prostate checked, because it's very important. If you, you know, you want to see your grandkids, this is the time to do it. Don't wait till you're 50. Do it when you're 40, because it's a scary thing. And it's nothing to laugh at. So, please, get your body checked. Get your prostate checked immediately. Thank you very much. And we also made a card for the mayor. Sorry, for his mother and all, from Langley, Westwood and King, all the kids. Put their names on it. So this is his sympathy card. Thank you.
We're going to get a photo, and then the proclamation. So our music teacher does Westwood, King, and Allegheny. She does a lot of schools, a lot of kids, and she's amazing. I was just going to say that. They're coming back when? They're coming back March 17th with King. Is that your district? Or, okay, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. You were really amazing. Thank you. You were so well behaved. Thank you. Will the folks from CTE come forward, please? And can I just say, the mayor's assistant just walked in, so if the kids want to give the card to the mayor's assistant or talk to him? But CTE, yeah, come forward, please. Thank you, Ms. Greer. Now, this is Councilman Lavelle's proclamation. He's unable to be here, but he really wanted to be here. And I'm glad he trusted me to do this proclamation, because it's such a worthwhile program. Thank you. Thank you. That's nothing compared to what we hear here. It's usually coming from maybe. Okay. Well, I'll wait till you're done with your photo. Whereas, February 1st through the 28th, 2020, Has been designated Career and Technical Education Month By the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes In our society are rapidly reflected In the structure and nature of work, Thereby placing new and additional responsibilities On our educational system, as if you don't have it enough. And whereas, career and technical education provides Americans With a school-to-careers connection And is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce Which fosters productivity in business and industry And contributes to America's leadership In the international marketplace. And whereas, career and technical education Gives high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications Of skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, Thus improving the quality of their education, Motivating potential dropouts, And giving all students leadership opportunities In their fields and in their communities. And whereas, Pittsburgh Public Schools' career and technical education programs Help students to prepare for high-wage, high-skill, high-demand careers In STEM fields, industry apprenticeships, And for two- or four-year degree programs At Pennsylvania state-funded schools, Community colleges, private schools, and trade schools. And whereas, Pittsburgh Public Schools' career and technical education programs Are an integral part of the district's objective To ensure that all students are equipped with skills To succeed in college, career, and life. And whereas, the ever-increasing cooperative efforts Of the career and technical educators' business and industry Simulate the growth and vitality of our local economy And that of the entire nation By preparing graduates for career fields forecast To experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore be it resolved That the Council of the City of Pittsburgh Does hereby declare February to be Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Pittsburgh. We have a motion in a second. Proclamation's approved. And we're going to start with Dr. Thompson, and then School Board Members. I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Doctor, I worked for Dr. Thompson. I worked for Dr. Thompson. Let me just say that.
You put about 15 years on me on that one.
That's how long ago I worked there.
So, thank you, Ms. Kell Smith as well, Councilman Kell Smith. We appreciate the support.
That's great. You called me Councilman, and I called you Thompson. So, we're even now.
Okay. Comic relief is over now, really. So, seriously, thank you. We appreciate you. You're always supporting us. You're always at our school, supporting our schools as well. And we really appreciate your support on a regular basis, all right? But I also want to give special thanks to Ms. Angela Mike as well, Executive Director of CTE and her team also. But also, Ms. Cindy Falls, who's a board member who works tirelessly And is a CTE champion on a regular basis, 24/7. So we really support you and thank you for your support. But also to our students, for partaking in the health careers And also the carpentry trades as well. So, thank you for taking on those endeavors, and good luck And to all your future endeavors, all right? Thank you. And happy Mardi Gras. I have my Mardi Gras beads. Who's next? Ms. Falls? Or Ms. Mike?
Ms. Mike first, yeah. And then we'll do the School Board Members, if they want to speak.
Thank you, City Council, for acknowledging Career and Technical Education Month. In Pittsburgh Public Schools, we have 16 different Career and Technical Education Programs That students can take advantage of across six of our high schools. And I wanted to give you some of our current data. This past year, we had students graduate from high school with over 500 certifications. We also had a 98% graduation rate. And our students participated in over 400 work-based learning experiences out of school. So, a lot of good things happening in career and technical education, Which jumpstarts our students for their careers. Not only jobs or careers, but also for post-secondary. Our students are also earning dual enrollment credits. They're Skills USA competition winners. In fact, Wednesday night, we'll be celebrating 19 who medaled, Competing across the state with other CTE students. And today, our carpentry and also our health career students are here. Some of them have medaled and will be recognized Wednesday night. So, as was talked about earlier in the proclamation, Our students definitely are preparing for high-wage, high-skill jobs. And we encourage families, if you're listening, and students, Check us out on the website. There's an online application. And hopefully, some of the families out there will become CTE, Part of our CTE family next year. Thank you.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. I do want to thank City Council. This is amazing that you have recognized the work That the Pittsburgh Public Schools are doing. But I just want to share just a couple of lines with you. I got this this morning, and I thought, how appropriate can this be? It came out of Harrisburg that everyone appears to agree More needs to be done to increase apprenticeships, Career and technical training To address Pennsylvania's employment issues. This goes on and on in support Of how we need to have more apprenticeships and internships In all of the areas that Ms. Mike mentioned, and then some. But I also want you to know that it says in here, Because we're not filling those spaces, Pennsylvania is going out of the state to bring people in. No, that's not okay. We want to continue this pipeline from career and technical education Here in Pittsburgh. So our kids stay in Pittsburgh and work here. And pay taxes, and do all those wonderful things that we need them to do. But I do want you to know that there are, as Ms. Mike mentioned, high-paying skilled jobs That our kids can come out and make. And it's really funny, because some of us think, "I don't know, I must have picked the wrong profession, Because these people are making pretty good money." So, again, thank you for all your support. We need community. We need all of our neighborhoods. We need you. We need the mayor. We need everyone helping to support So that we can keep these programs running. And again, as Dr. Hamlet said, I am a product of CTE. Nursing was my background before I came into teaching. And I will promote this probably till my last breath. So, thank you again very much, and we really appreciate what you do. Thank you.
I just want to add that I want to say how much I appreciate our school board... I just want to add that I want to say how much I appreciate our school board members because Veronica's here today. She comes here, you know, for a lot of events, and she's taking care of her mother at the same time. And so I appreciate that. But I also appreciate Cindy Falls and all the school board members because they are working on a volunteer basis, a full-time job, helping or trying to help our kids. If we could just keep politics out of it and just let them do their job, we'd probably have an amazing school district doing amazing. And they are doing amazing things. You just know a little bit more about it. So I just want to thank you all for everything you do. And Dr. Hamlet, you have been amazing. So I want to thank you too for always being here and being supportive. But thank you all, thank you to everyone for all the work you do. Does everyone want to come up for a photo? All the members want to come up for a photo?
I just also want to wish everybody a happy Fat Tuesday and happy Mardi Gras because I know pretty soon after I get my work done, I'm gonna start to celebrate. Thank you.
We have Councilman O'Connor. With Alder Dice and other Pittsburgh Public Schools, so. I have to tell you, my brother used to be the principal of Alder Dice. I don't know if you've heard that.
All right, national merits first. Okay, your national merits. You should be able to figure this out here. I would hope, I would hope. I would hope. We might have to look at how they got these. Steps, they're steps. Okay, uh, so this is the Alder Dice National Merit Scholars. Uh, we, we get them in almost every year. Uh, it's great that, you know, Alder Dice is, uh, doing such a good job for our city, especially, you know, in my district. I'm really proud that Alder Dice, um, continues to be an anchor in Squirrel Hill. So whereas, in the 2019-2020 school year, there were two National Merit semifinalists. Only 1% of all high school students achieved this recognition based on their SATs and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. In addition, there were 15 National Merit, uh, commended students who are being recognized as ones of only 34,000 students recognized across the country. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Alder Dice High School for its consistent and unwavering emphasis on academics, rigor, and diversity in education, and congratulates the students who have achieved National Merit Scholar designation. I do have to recognize one special student, and I hope I pronounced your name right. So we actually had a winner, um, in, whereas in January, the Society for Science and Public, and the public announced the top 300 scholars in science talent research in 2020, the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high school seniors. The 300 scholars in their school will receive $2,000. I looked at it at first. I said, $2 million. I'm like, you guys, there goes your budget problem right there. The science talent search scholars were selected from 1,900-plus students, applicants, receiving over 659 high schools across 49 states. And we were able to have a winner in the City of Pittsburgh and at Alder Dice. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend and congratulate Me Hall High Wash? That was good, all right. It was hard. I went to Central. It's hard for us, you know, whatever. Yeah, exactly. So, so now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does announce Tuesday, February 25th, to be Me Hall High Wash Day and National, and National Merit Scholars Day.
Is there a motion to approve the procs? Second. All in favor? Proclamation's approved, both.
So would the students want, well, I'll let the principal superintendent want to speak first, and then the kids can introduce themselves.
I'm Dr. McCoy, principal at Alder Dice, and I want to thank Councilman O'Connor and the whole City Council for always being so welcoming. We're, you know, down here at least once or twice a year and really appreciate the support you have for Alder Dice and Pittsburgh Public Schools. And, you know, we're here with this group. We're gonna see, uh, our volleyball team in a minute. But this group is being recognized for how they've done on a standardized test, which is tops in the nation. But you look at this group of students, and they're so much more than that. I mean, you're looking at athletes and people involved in just about every club, activity, sport in the school. So they, they do it all, and they're well-rounded. And I think that's what's gonna make them successful in the future. So, so glad to recognize them again. And, um, if you don't mind, I want to kind of pass around the mic so you can introduce yourselves, all right?
I'm Oliver Dockerty Long. I'm Sean Whitney, probably going to Pitt, maybe if I get into Brown there. We'll see.
I'm James Rebuzi.
I'm Sam Zlatnikoff.
I'm Scott Sobel.
I'm Audrey Leong.
Me Hall High Wash.
I'm a Waldron.
Laura Brodkey, and I'm going to Penn.
I'm Aaron Berger.
William Ganger.
Jake Allen, I'm going to Northeastern.
James Rankin.
I'm Charlie Forster. I'm headed to Oberlin College next year.
I'm David Myster. I'm going to Lehigh University.
I'm Lindsay Van Luick. I'm not a student. I'm one of the counselors.
Dana Hekt. I am a school counselor, and I will be at Alder Dice next year.
So I just want to take a moment to commend these students, but also make sure we commend the leaders, the leader of the building. Right? Dr. McCoy. Commend our counselors for supporting our students, but also, again, commend you, um, celebrate you. You've committed yourself to being the very best and the brightest that we have in Pittsburgh. We want to make sure we continue that. But also uplift your brothers and sisters as well with you along the way. Okay? Continue to do great things.
Now can we have the volleyball team come on up? It's Alder Dice. All right, Lynette, they need to. All right, more, more Alder Dice. Awardees. Okay, so this is, uh, this is one that's become very familiar to us. This is, uh, the Alder Dice Girls Volleyball Team. And this is the sixth time in a row they got to miss school and come down here. So it is a great accomplishment. You actually have one student that wants to introduce all of the players. She, she said she would, so we'll do that in a minute. But whereas, through skilled and dedicated coaching and through individual commitment, hard work, and team loyalty, the Alder Dice Girls Volleyball Team posted an overall winning record, winning all section games and defeating Brashir High School in the finals and making their six-straight City League Championship. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the hard work and commitment shown by the Alder Dice Girls Volleyball Team and commends the trust and dedication shown by their coaches and congratulates them on their six-straight City League Championship. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, February 25th, to be Alder Dice Girls Volleyball City League Championship Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve the second? All in favor? Proclamation's approved. Thanks, Bruce, for being the only one to vote.
All right, thank you again, Councilmen. And, um, just like I said about our National Merit Scholars, you know, we're recognizing these students for their athletic accomplishments, but they're just overall well-rounded students. They're involved in so many things, and they make Alder Dice an amazing place. Before we introduce individual students, Coach Keen, do you want to say a few words?
So I'm, uh, head coach Maddie Keen. Um, I was actually on the very first, um, City League win in 2014, coached by Rich O'Brien. But I'd really like to thank Cory O'Connor and all of City Council for having us here today. And also Dr. James McCoy and my assistant coach, Rich O'Brien. So I'm really proud of these girls. They worked really hard. They did win the city championship this year, but they also played really, really well, um, in the state playoffs. It was the best that I've ever seen them play. So I would, I mean, we could pass the mic around or Ella would like to come up and introduce everybody?
Hi, I'm Ella Rubenstein. I'm a junior at Alder Dice. So this is my team. Yeah, um, senior middle hitter, Arianna Morrell. Junior right side, Ally Raisman. Um, our setter, two-time, um, Player of the Year, Emily Graham. Julia Harvey, Sophie Baker, my sister, Libby Rubenstein. Star Wassler, Aja Jackson, Maggie Loyah, and Tori Komrovsky, so. Thank you again.
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Hamlet. Thank you. Thank you. The next order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. When the red light comes on, your time is up. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? We'll go second to have a clear house. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Thank you, Ms. Falls. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? Will the first speaker please come to the podium? This is the last call. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Buongiorno. This is Dr. Ronald Miller, Bloomfield and Beltsuver. I'm a member of the, um, Italian Sons and Daughters of America, the Bloomfield Group. Giuseppe Moretti, you know who he is? Who he was. If you're a Pitt Panther-Hollow fan, you should know him. Great sculptor. I'm a GIS candidate for President 2020, Global Intelligence dot org. I founded the CGSI, the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, in 1998, and the GIS Global Intelligence Society in 2010. My best information in intelligence 2010 to 2020 is that not, i-is that it is not the national government, but local governments that are most critical for the, for the governance of our country and for the rule of law. That's how seriously I take this legislature. What you do in it is a different matter, but I take you to be the most important, and then the state, and then the federal government. And public comment is key to that rule of law, allows for, um, response and, uh, holding to account in ethics. Concern or anti-concern of Pittsburgh City Council is public comment. There is a pattern when I do public comment of uncivil, um, action performed or permitted by Pittsburgh City Council that violates my speech right under the US and Pennsylvania constitutions and Pennsylvania, uh, public comment statutes. That includes, um, multiple episodes, 2013 to 2020, that involve Ms. Kail Smith, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Burgess, Ms. Gross, and now, uh, Prey and Chris. Proceeded 2010 to 2014 by episodes that involve the past president of council, Darlene Harris, and, and Mr. William Paduto. Proceeded by the 2020 February 18 Disorder debacle led by Mr. Burgess, um, that interrupted my public comment. I have more to say about this, but I want you to understand that, um, my claims on this matter are thoroughly evidenced by video, audio, and written public records. And, um, I am going to proceed, uh, at multiple levels, local, state, and federal, uh, in court against this council on this matter.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Have a nice day. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning. You can use whichever one you're comfortable with.
My name's Lola Stanley. I resided in Greenfield for basically over 65 years. My first two years were in Wheeling, West Virginia. Sometimes I wish my parents would have stayed there. Right now, I feel like a liar to everybody that I tell my address to. Because when you give my address, you give it as 407 Aldear Street. Nope. I live at 407 Haller Street, and from this day forward, that's what I'll use. Companies that deliver to us can't find us. My new neighbor came to me just yesterday and said, you know, they wanted me to go to Zillian Oakwood to pick my packages up. I did suggest to him what I tell them. Take it to our post office. We'll get our items. And it works. But the other things, I mean, come on, I've lived here 22 years. Nobody can figure out, there's a ditch down that road. Nobody can figure out who it belongs to. I get told the school board, I get told the city, and the last time out, I got told PWSA. I really don't care. I really don't care who it belongs to. It needs taking care of. There's three houses back there. I'm the only house that that ditch affects because when it rains, it pours into my house. All I ask them to do, clean the ditch. Don't rape my hillside, which is what they did a few years back. Guess what's happening from the...when that? The hill's sliding. That whole hill, from the back of Haller, to Greenfield Avenue, is now going to be one big good mudslide. And the sewer at the bottom of the hill? It's never cleaned. They clean it one day, and the next day, it's filled back up. One of the reasons? Greenfield's school, and I'm not condemning the school because I went to Greenfield. They mow the lawn, and they leave it lay, and it all washes down. I don't know what the solutions to any of this is, but I mean, come on, folks. Would you like to live in a house that's got water damage all over it? Or that you shudder every time you hear the rain, like we're going to do today? No, I don't want to do that. I really don't want to do that. And it's sad, you know, 22 years. That road's been repaved once. And let me tell you, it didn't cost the city a dime, except employees' wages. You know how they did it? They came, they scooped up the asphalt, they reheated it, and they relaid it. Couldn't tell the difference. But we got potholes now. And that's also my walkway, because there's no walkway back there. I don't blame the city on that either. They did try to attempt to build a hillside up on the other side, also with a lot of the stone from taking it out of the hill. People still dump. We had, and I'm not sad to say the man passed away, a tree removed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a nice day. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. I'm doing a lot of better. I was really sick last week, whether you know it or not. I went on for...oh, Yvonne Brown. I live in the Hill District. But I went to...there was a place that was talking about cancer. Come to be checked for cancer. My mother died from cancer, and my older sister. And I've had a little problem, so I said, "I'll go see." But when I went in, my blood pressure was so high, they called Matilda Thies. They didn't answer. She said, "You need to go to the hospital." Well, I'm right on Forbes. I said, "I'll walk up to Presby." She said, "No, no, you might have a heart attack by then, or a stroke." I went to the hospital. I'm just saying this for the people to understand. Just riding from Forbes up to the hospital was $1,383. So you see how expensive going to the hospital, even getting sick. Now, I have another problem, but my councilman is not here. And I want every one of you who are council people to please listen and please follow my words. We have foreign people that live in our building. We have all races, but there's the Chinese people. They talk to me. And she came, and she was saying that the manager, because the man is making noise up over her head, told her to call the police, 911. And she's saying that she did, but she can hardly speak English. Okay, so by this time, another foreign woman that I know can speak English. So I took her up there, and so she said 911. Even, she says, "No, 911." See, what needs to be understood here? We're good for it. We respect our police. But in other countries, no, they do not. This foreign woman has the police coming, but she can't even explain. Please, if you have seniors in your district, please call them managers and tell them. They have interpreters. They come here, they're sponsored, so there are interpreters. So find the interpreters and ask the interpreters what they should say. Don't have them, because she was saying her hair...she showed me earplugs. There's another thing I must say about the child wealth, you know, babysitting. I wanted just to understand that, Ms...I didn't even know she was pregnant. She left, came back. She was gone. You would say, "Excuse the absent member." Four months she was gone. She came back with her baby on her lap and sat all day long. But when I brought my five-year-old grandbaby, you had Mr. Burgess tell me, "It's not the time and the place." I don't think it was the time and the place for her baby to be sitting there all day. Plus, all them months that she couldn't even come back two days a week. I told her this. You couldn't come back two days a week? I was a caseworker. When them young girls had babies, they had to go to school. They had to get a job. But she can take...and I found out $5,000 a month? She just sat there all the time? No, that's the service. And some of you, when you don't come to the meetings, that's the service. Understand that. Now, I found a book that says that you need to be... You need to be impeached if you don't come to meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the next order of business, presentation of papers. We'll start with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you, Reverend Burgess, and thank you for cheering the meeting last week. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 139, Resolution Amending Resolution 510, Providing for a Contract and/or Agreement Providing for the Planning Design Repairs In Connection with the Production of the Oakland Transportation Study And Associated Projects To Provide For a Specific Payee And Authorized Entering Into a Contract For the Oakland Transportation Study. Bill Number 140, Resolution Amending Resolution 336, Providing for Contract and/or Agreement In Connection With the Production of the Hill District Mobility Network And Parking Management Plan And Associated Projects To Provide For a Specific Payee And Authorized Entering Into a Contract For the Hill District Transportation Study.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 141, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan For the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project Located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 145, Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance Number 36, Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals By Repealing Chapter 639 in its entirety And Adding a New Chapter 639 Species and Red-Eared Sliders Prohibiting the Keeping, Sale, Exchange, Adoption, Exchange, or Transfer of Such Animals in the City. Bill Number 146, Ordinance Supplementing Ordinance Number 36 Relative to the Pittsburgh City Code at Title VI, Conduct Article III Dogs and Cats and Other Animals, Chapter 636 Wild Animals, Section 63606 Prohibiting the Capture and Harm of Any Wild Birds To Eliminate Any Permits or Licenses Allowing Individuals to Trap Wild Birds And to Completely Prohibit Trapping Wild Birds Other Than by a Properly Qualified and Trained Employee Of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Animal Care and Control While a Wild Bird Is Injured, Resides Within a Building, Or Poses an Imminent Risk of Property Damage or Physical Harm.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Councilman O'Connor for Councilman Lavelle. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 142, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement With Compass Natural Gas Partners LP For the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System And Provision of Fuel for the Payment thereof Not to Exceed $378,000. Bill Number 143, Resolution Amending Resolution 837, Which Authorizes and Directs the City Controller To Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated As the Schinley Park Rink Trust Fund For the Purpose of Depositing Funds And Expenditure of Funds for Any and All Related Expenses To Authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation To Utilize the Trust Fund.
Thank you, Councilman...or Councilwoman...I'm sorry, Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 144, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety To Enter on Behalf of the City Into An Agreement With Bucks County Community College For Hazardous Materials Safety Officer Training And Certification Services At a Sum Not to Exceed $9,000.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Good morning. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 147, Resolution Authorizing the City To Enter Into a Preservation Agreement With the New Hazlet Theater.
I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion?
I'd like it to show up on the tomorrow's standing committee, so we can discuss that then.
Okay. So can we have a...is that a voice vote? A voice vote for... We have a motion. We have a second?
Yep.
We have a second. How can we have a voice vote, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye. Yep, we're aye. It's a voice vote.
Okay. And so that will be on the...the rules of council will be waived. That'll be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And I have a...one communication for acting pay approval from DOMI and DPW.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 148, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval On Behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure For KT Sawyer And On Behalf of the Department of Public Works For Donald Mudrick Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018.
Can we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? The motion was passed. The next order of business is reports of committee for final action. With Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. We have Councilman O'Connor for Councilman Lavelle.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 134, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law For February 19, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 107, Resolution Amending Resolution 94, Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant In The Total Sum of $6,857.02 In Favor of Diane and Ronald J. Barkey By Changing the Issuance to Read as Follow: The Issuance of a Warrant In The Total Amount of $8,500 Payable to Diane and Ronald K. Barkey As Final Settlement Related to the Actions Filed In The Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 108, Resolution For An Issuance of a Warrant In The Amount of $3,490 In Favor of Tri Rivers Consulting Services Related to Expert Medical Testimony of James L. Cosgrove, M.D. For Use at a Trial In Reference to the Matter of Willa Mae Matthews Versus the City. Bill Number 123, Resolution Amending Resolution 748, Which Authorizes the Mayor and Director of Finance To Execute An Agreement of Sale And All Related Documents Necessary To Effect The Purchase By the City In Lieu Of Taken By Imminent Domain Of 410 Matthews Avenue In The 30th Ward And To Accept A Deed For The Property Further Authorizing The Expenditures of Fund For The Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs To Adjust the Code of County Information To The 2020 Year. Bill Number 124, Resolution Amending Resolution 629 of 2019, Which Is A Resolution Authorizing The Purchase Of Certain Property By the City In Lieu Of Imminent Domain In Order To Advance City's Proposed Permanent Closure Of The Timberland Bridge To Provide Specific Pay Information And Adjust the Code of County Information To The 2020 Year. Bill Number 125, Resolution Amending Resolution 702, Which Authorizes the Mayor and Director of Finance To Execute An Agreement of Sale And All Documents Necessary To Effect The Purchase By the City In Lieu Of Taken By Imminent Domain Of 35 and 33 Semisir Street In The 26th Ward And To Accept A Deed For The Property Further Authorizing The Expenditures of Funds For The Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs By Adjusting The Code of County Information To The 2020 Year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills, Council President and Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I'd like to address Bill 123 and take a moment to thank everyone for their patience around the acquiring of property so that we can design the new campus for the Fourth Public Works Division. Excuse me. This completes the final piece of assemblage so that we have a complete campus from which to work, that we can begin the actual construction of the new Fourth Division. I know Councilman Coghill's been working diligently to make this happen, along with myself and you, Council President Kail Smith. So this is the last assemblage that we need to complete the campus to begin the work. And I just want to take a time here to thank everybody for their patience. We know it's been a long time coming, but it is coming, and we're going to see a new Fourth Division very shortly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm thrilled, you know, that we're going to be breaking ground, I hope, this spring. We've been really lucky because we've had a mild winter. I've only shoveled my walk once. So just in time for next winter, I'm hoping this project is finished by then. And I want to thank Councilman Kraus and you, Madam President, for your support and all you had to do with it, so.
Thank you. Any other members?
Thanks.
I just want to thank both of you for the work. It shows when the Southwest sticks together, what we can accomplish. And so I want to thank you both for sticking together, leading this charge, and making sure that the residents in our side of town have two divisions, not one to serve that many neighborhoods. Because we can definitely tell the response in our area has been definitely changed since the closing of the Fourth Division. And so I know our residents cannot wait to have this Fourth Division reopen because it also benefits the Fifth Division area. So thank you both very much for all your leadership and all your work. And thanks to the administration for agreeing to do so. Okay. Seeing no further conversations, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will...will the passage of the bill? Will vote aye when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes eight, noes zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes are finally passed. Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 135, Report of the Committee on Public Works For February 19, 2020, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 103, Resolution Granting Unto Matt Barnett Day Three Design Their Successors And Assigns The Privilege And License To Construct, Maintain And Use At Their Own Cost And Expense A Stormwater Runoff Mitigation Rain Garden At 915 Liberty Avenue In The 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 117, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 316, Entitled Resolution Providing For a Contract And/or Agreement Providing For The Preliminary Design And Final Design Services During Construction And Miscellaneous Services For Traffic Signal Installation Of The South Side Signal Project And Providing For The Payment Of The Costs Thereof Not to Exceed To Account For An Amendment To The Contract That Increased The Total Project Costs But Not to Exceed $536,000.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Any...is there any discussion on the bills? Council President Kraus?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly on...forgive me, I should have the bill number in front of me. The South Side Signal Project, Bill 117. Again, I just want to thank the administration for their diligence on bringing this to be. This is not the Carson Street project that we have been anxiously awaiting for a number of years now, which will launch in April. But this is actually the 18th Street Signal Project. I believe these dollars are federal dollars that are coming in. But all of the traffic signals are to be re-signalized, and all of the intersections designed with bump outs to create increased safety in that 18th Street quarter. So we're looking forward to seeing Carson Street from Smithville to Frank Fuer accomplished here, beginning in April. And then early in 2021, we'll see the 18th Street project accomplished as well. That will...these dollars will help to put a signal at 18th and Josephine, which has been a sore spot for quite some time because we have a no-left-turn signal assigned, put there now. And that intersection's going to be recreated with a traffic light, which is going to make a whole lot of people really happy. So just wanted to recognize the administration and say thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? I just want to say congratulations on this again, again, your leadership. I can tell you- you, back when I was in high school, I used to walk up the Eighteenth Street steps and go past that intersection, and it was bad back then.
Yeah.
Which is over about forty-five years ago, so I just want to tell you that it's a long time coming, I know the residents will be thrilled, and again, your leadership is really delivered.
I used to get, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I used to get comments from residents like years before I even thought about running for a public office, it's been a very long time coming, and I know people are going to be really happy, so thank you.
Thank you for bringing that kind of money and project into the area. Seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of the bills, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Bruce, oh, no, I just did, Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number one thirty-six, report of the Committee on Human Resources for February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number one oh five, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of effect formerly Comcast in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cent for digital advertising services in connection with the citywide recruiting plan and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill number one oh six, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of SHRM in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Pennsylvania and federal labor law posters and providing for the payment of the cost thereof.
You have heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills having received legally, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And we'll move on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number one thirty-seven, report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number one ten, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning of the city to accept a remittance from Point Park University in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. This remittance will fund the design and fabrication of historic district signage not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
You have heard the reading of the title of the bills, any, in the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? So, I'm just going to just ask a question real quickly, and it's just, I'm wondering who's putting the signs up for the Point Park, because there's oftentimes in our neighborhoods we ask about signage and banners, and we're told that they have to put them up at their own expense and own costs, I'm curious, even though I see fifteen thousand for the banners, is that also installation and removal, I just wanted to know, and so I'll...
My understanding is it's the full cost.
The full cost, I just want to make sure, because I want to make sure that our groups aren't being charged any differently than big organizations or businesses or universities. Okay, thank you, any, any other discussion on the bill?
I just, I'll add that I've had the same experience where any banners put up in neighborhoods have, the expenses have been borne by the neighborhood group and were not provided by DPW.
Right, and we had the same thing with the banners for veterans, and I think, I mean, Aggie Bros came in and met with us before she passed away to tell us how they did it over at her, on your side of town, but it was, the cost was, of the banners is expensive because we have to pay for the banners to be installed and removed and all that, so I'd like to see if there's some way that we can work that out a little bit with the city or someone to help us with that cost, to free that cost, but thank you, Councilwoman. Seeing no further discussion, the bill is now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And we'll move on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number one thirty-eight, report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number thirty-five, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license from Bell Puck Inc. to the applicant known as nine fifty Pennsylvania LLC for the premises located at nine fifty Penn Avenue known as No Nine Fifty Penn LLC pursuant to the amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill number one oh four, resolution authorizing the approval of the two thousand and twenty Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts all.
Thank you, you have heard the reading and title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills has, have received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, I have one meeting announcement this afternoon, Council has a cable cast post-agenda discussion at one thirty on the bill, on Bill one 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 as it relates to the Parks Plan. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, Council will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion at one thirty PM on paid sick leave. The Council Parks Plan is, that's Councilman Burgess, correct? And the paid sick leave is Councilman O'Connor. Can we have, is there any discussion for members, Councilman O'Connor?
We have a will of council.
Oh, I don't have it on here, okay.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, you know what, I did see an email, but it's not on the notes, thank you.
Just last paragraph, and then I'll brief discussion.
Councilman O'Connor presents, now therefore being resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh makes known its opposition to any modernization effort that seeks to also weaken or diminish the efficacy and intent of the Community Reinvestment Act including OCC two thousand and eighteen zero zero eight fifteen fifteen, the rule change proposed by the OCC and FDIC, and be it further resolved that this council encourages community development institutions, neighborhood groups, and other concerned organizations to help ensure that accountable, strengthening, and impactful investments remain the central focus of the Community Reinvestment Act by submitting their public comments to the federal government before April eighth, two thousand and twenty, the date, that date reflects the recently announced thirty-day extension to the comment period.
Brief comment, thank you, I want to thank Matt in my office as well as PCRG, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for sponsoring, I know I spoke with Councilwoman Strasburger who would like to also be a sponsor as well, just so everybody knows, if this change does happen, PCRG believes that we could lose maybe ninety to one hundred and eighty million dollars over the next five years for our community groups and mortgages and things like that, so I just want to thank everybody for the support in this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
I'll just chime in, yeah, the Federal Community Reinvestment Act is the tool that we have to fight redlining, it is the tool that ensures that banks have to report on their mortgage lending, it should not be weakened because we need that information to hold big banks accountable, it is also the tool that we have to ensure that there is reinvestment by big banks in the neighborhoods that need that investment, so the Community Reinvestment Act, it is federal law, should not be weakened so that we can ensure that reinvestment, and so it's very alarming, the deadline for comment, all public can comment is March ninth, I don't actually have the contact information, but I'm sure we can all provide it on our website, so that we can, we can, this will of council, thank you, Councilman O'Connor for the work that, for you, doing the work and your staff to bring it to our attention, this will of council will go to public comment by March ninth, but also the public can also have their individual voices heard.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
And I want to thank Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Gross for their work on this, and I would indeed like to be a cosponsor, thank you.
Thank you, any other members, Councilman Burgess and then Councilman Coghill?
Certainly, we support this will of council, however, we also must recognize that Pittsburgh is one of the most segregated cities in the United States, and that the data clearly shows that mortgages are A, not giving, are not being given equitably to African Americans, and B, mortgages are not being given in African American communities. We have, that is, we have, and we'll be showing over the next few months to council documents and evidence and mapping that clearly shows this tendency to A, not give mortgages to African Americans, and B, not give mortgages in African American communities. It's interesting, the primary way in which over the, over the last cent, couple, maybe at least a century, maybe a couple centuries, is the way that you build wealth is to buy a home, yet African Americans have been A, not allowed to buy homes in certain communities, and B, in those communities where they are buying a home, their housing prices go down. My father was not allowed to get a mortgage, they would not, even though he was working full-time, they, no one would give him a mortgage because he was an African American, right? We lived in the West End at that time, in Ingram, and my father and family wanted to stay in the West End, but they could not buy a house in the West End because they were African American, and so they went to the only place where they could buy a house, which was in Homewood. They still couldn't get a mortgage, the person who owned the house wanted to leave because of white flight, so my father paid his mortgage payment directly to the owner of the house for fifteen years until he bought the house. He bought the house in nineteen fifty-seven for about fifteen thousand dollars, and over his lifestyle, lifespan, the house went up a few thousand dollars, but mostly it went down, and now the house in two thousand and twenty is worth less than what my father purchased it for. It's just, it is, it is, it is a shame that exists in our city, but it's a fact, and we'll be talking more about that, there's also a book called White Fragility that I would, I will bring in, perhaps I'll order, order copies to council to read about, right? Because you'll, one of the things you'll find out is that when you start talking about these issues, people get uncomfortable, right? When you talk about these reality issues of experiences of African American, African Americans, you'll, you'll see a visible uncomfortability of people because of, oftentimes they really believe that things have been equal, that their success in life has become on their own merit, when there has not been structural impediments, you know, there's structural imped, if my father had bought that same house in Point Breeze, if he had bought that same house anywhere in, in, the same house, my house, my home has three, three kitchens, three bathrooms, a full basement, if he had bought that same house in Point Breeze, right now that house would probably be three fifty, three seventy-five, some number like that, but because it's in Homewood, it's probably worth eighteen thousand dollars, and so one of the things he talked about, you know, he lived to ninety-two, but one of the things he talked about was how he did everything right, he raised his kids right, my brother and I, neither one of us have ever been in jail, how he paid all of his bills, paid all of his taxes, did everything everyone told him to do, yet, you know, he did not earn, worked every day, worked hard for, for all of his life, my father didn't retire until he was in his eighties, he walked five miles every other day, this is what it's like, and you know, I won't go on a diatribe, but that's been on my mind, last few months, it's been really on my mind, you know, I think there is a disconnect, and I need to talk more about what it means to be, to live in Pittsburgh black, and especially to live black and poor, there, it is, it is, it is a significantly different experience than being in the majority culture in this city, and so I appreciate the, the will of council to help strengthen the law, but we have to do much more than this, we have to break up the system that is systematically discriminating against people of color.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess, Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to add, I failed to mention my appreciation for the mayor's office and the administration with the fourth Public Works Division, as you know, Madam...
Can we come back to that?
Sure.
We're on this bill, I mean, on this will of council, then we'll come back to that.
I'd like to add my name as a cosponsor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Second, we didn't do this, we didn't do this yet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the will's been approved, proclamation's approved, Councilman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to add my appreciation for the mayor's office, as you know, Madam President, it was really my first meeting about the Public Works Division, for them to be, you know, on board from the beginning and to make that happen, you know, I just wanted to mention that, so, thank you.
Thank you, they, they were really very helpful.
Yes.
And actually, I think it was so helpful because we went directly to the mayor, and I think the mayor was eager to help the South Hills and the West End in terms of getting our streets cleared.
And I thank you for making that meeting happen, so.
Thank you, well, he was eager to have it, so it was easy. Any other comments from members? Seeing none, we have a motion to, is there an absent member, oh, yeah, to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
The move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.[1738.76]